Can I have the roll call please from Ms. Lawrence? And the pledge, let's do that first, great idea.
(inaudible)
All right, thank you, now we'll do the roll call.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Beldia Lepenya.
Present.
Mayor Protam Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here, and I don't believe we have any requests for continuances or on any agenda item or hearing, so I'm going to head down to the podium for special presentations. All right, and good evening once again. This evening, we have the pleasure of having members of the Assistance League of the Caneo Valley here with us tonight, and their president Kelly McMurray Fisher is here to join us, if you want to come up to the podium. Evening Kelly.
Hi.
Hi, nice to see you. I'll tell you, the Assistance League has been in business now in the Caneo Valley for 20 years, raised over $3 million that they've returned to the community, and put in 21,000 hours of volunteer hours every year, so that's just fantastic. The programs that they do, and I'm intimately familiar with these because my wife happens to be in the Assistance League, so I get reminded of this. 2,000 elementary kids, over 2,000 have been supplied with school clothes and shoes. Care bears, or should we call them care bears, or yeah, stuffed bears have gone to hospitals, care centers, and fire stations to kids to comfort them. Tutoring sessions at elementary schools have been provided. This is a good one too, suits and business clothes to the rescue mission, so people can apply for jobs and get job training, it's important. And I know you have a Target night, which I think is really, really great, where underprivileged kids can get gift certificates anywhere from $50 to $100 and shop for some clothes. So I think that's fantastic too. And I know you also have a thrift shop on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, it's right across from Armstrong's, some great bargains there, some very high-end merchandise, and all the profits of course go to the Assistance League to help people in the Caneo Valley, so would you like to add a little bit?
I would, I would. It's really an honor being recognized. Our organization is 93 strong adults and 40 teenagers that also are part of our auxiliary assist teams, so we're able to donate our 21,000 hours. There's so much need in the Caneo Valley, we look around and don't really appreciate that, but there's over 10,000 children who may not have enough money for school clothing, and our organization is able to support 30% of those. So we are looking for people to go to our website, ALCV.net, donate, we're looking for new members, so check out what it takes to be a member or a community volunteer, we have a lot of fun doing what we do, and we thank you very, very much for recognizing our efforts.
Thank you Kelly. I'd like to present this commendation to the league as well, which commemorates your 20 years of service here in Thousand Oaks, and for those of you who are looking for something to do in town, that's something of good deeds, the Assistance League is a very good place to start, a lot of fun, and it does great work, so.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Why don't we have all, thank you, yeah. Let's have all the Assistance League ladies come on up, and we're going to get a picture here in front of the dais. All right, oh that was great. Okay, now it's time for the city to be honored, and I'd like to invite Jeffrey Greendown, he's the Director of Strategic Services for Laserfish. There's Mr. Green, how are you sir?
How are you Mr. Mayor?
Welcome to Thousand Oaks.
Thank you so much.
Why don't you take the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, my name is Jeffrey Green, I'm from Laserfish. We're very grateful vendors to the city for using our software, and if I could ask Linda Lawrence, and Antoinette Mann, and Laura McGuire to come forward. Around 10 years ago, we set an award for our top users, we call it our Run Smarter Award Members. We have 35,000 organizations around the world that use our software, and we award this to less than 50 organizations every year. My engineers wanted me to give a special shout-out to Antoinette, because she took this project on, had weekly meetings, allowed the staff to use our solution as well as the current solution until they felt comfortable with it. Basically, everything you need to do to make sure you have a successful project, and on behalf of Laserfish, if I could, and our founder, Nayling Whacker, I'd like to award you with this Run Smarter Award for how you've deployed our workflow in a very unique way in the agenda packet process, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, I must tell you, our City Clerk Department is second to none to keep this place organized and running efficiently. All right, it's award night tonight, we have Mr. Ron Colkins from the American Public Works Association to make a presentation to our Public Works Department.
Hello Ron.
Thank you Mayor, nice to see you.
Well, you have another department that's second to none, and that's your Public Works Department. I represent the American Public Works Association, and briefly, I'd like to just touch on what the association is, what this award is all about, and why it's so spectacular. The American Public Works Association is the primary professional association for the public works field, and we represent 30,000 professionals throughout US and Canada. As a member of the National Board of Directors, it's my privilege to be here tonight to present this outstanding award. Now accreditation of a public works agency is about as good as it gets. It involves a very thorough review of everything the department does, all the practices, all the procedures, they document all of the things that they do, they develop efficiencies, they save money, they really look at how things are accomplished. And then, once this is accomplished and documented, there's a team that comes in from outside the state of professionals that know about best practices in the field, and they come in and check everything to make sure it meets those nationally-recognized standards. And accreditation of an agency lasts for four years, and your Public Works Department was accredited four years ago. And re-accreditation occurs every four years to make sure that that agency remains current. Now the city Public Works Department was accredited four years ago, and they've just gone through that re-accreditation, and it was a team effort led by your Public Works Director Jay Spurgeon, his key staff, your accreditation manager Graham Watts, the city administrative team, your field staff at the Municipal Service Center and the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. And the city of Thousand Oaks was the sixth agency in California, and there's what, 435 cities and counties, sixth agency in the state to receive accreditation, and only the 63rd agency in all of North America and Canada. And I think this is just one more example of how the city of Thousand Oaks is really leading the way. It recognizes you, one more way of recognizing you as a premier city, and you know, I just was thinking about the fact that you just had a celebration at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant for 100% green energy, and I can't tell you any other city that can accomplish, has accomplished that, it's really outstanding. And also, having recently celebrated 50 years as a city, you know how important it is to maintain and enhance your infrastructure, and let me tell you, you have an outstanding Public Works Department to accomplish just that. So I would like to thank the City Council for your leadership, not only your leadership in Ventura County in California, but beyond. You're fortunate to have an outstanding city manager and public work staff, and on behalf of the American Public Works Association, it's my pleasure to award the formal re-accreditation plaque, thank you very much.
That's fantastic, Public Works, the department that can be taken for granted at times, but provides the absolute essential things that we expect in the city for a quality lifestyle. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And now, speaking of Public Works, we have our Deputy Public Works Director Cliff Finley to come down and give us a little update on the Herbs Road Project.
Good evening Mayor Adam and Council. Brief update on the Herbs Road Project, Southern California Edison is now about 90% complete with their underground cable installation. Cut-overs from the underground service, or from the overhead to the underground have been continuing, will be continuing this week and next, and in the next few weeks, expect to be completed, probably the week of February 9th, all cut-overs will be accomplished, and the cabling will be removed. It's kind of exciting to see what Edison does, they cut the tops of the poles off when they're done, so watch for the poles tops to come off. Verizon and Time Warner, about 95% complete, they're waiting for Edison to finish up at this point in time. Several of the power poles have already been removed, the rest should be removed by the third week of February. Once those poles are down, the final retaining wall, drainage improvements, and street improvements will be completed, and we are anticipating paving and completion in early March, so we're almost there. For additional information, go to the website, www.toaks.org/herbs, and you can also sign up for email updates, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Finley, appreciate your report.
Next report is the 10123 Construction Project Update. Want to make some comments on the 10123 Transitions. Caltrans has installed channelizers in the Gore area for the northbound 101 to the northbound 23, you may have noticed those, they were put in place to try to improve that transition, improve safety. They are also now working with the contractor in evaluating ways to accelerate the widening of that transition to get back to two lanes as soon as possible. They're also working on the southbound 23 to the southbound 101 transition, they are restriping and adding additional pavement markers to further clarify those lane configurations. Upcoming closures, Hampshire Road will have a full night closure, January 28th, 29th, and February 1st through the 6th, that'll be 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. They are actually starting bridge forming and false work, so they're going to be widening the bridges. Moore Park Road will have a full closure, the same dates, January 28th, 29th, February 1st through the 6th, 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, they're pouring the center bent columns. Also want to give Council an update on some upcoming extended ramp closures, now these will really impact the community, are going to be important. The northbound Hampshire On-ramp is going to be, have a 55-hour extended weekend closure in early March. The northbound Moore Park On-ramp will have a two-week extended closure in early March, and the westbound, I'm sorry, the southbound Westlake On-ramp will have a four-week extended closure starting in mid-March. That closure, they are completely reconstructing that northbound, sorry, southbound Westlake On-ramp, so more to come on that, I'll be updating Council, and there'll definitely be information available on the city's website, www.toaks.org/10123. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Finley, appreciate that. Just a brief aside, for those of you who may know, Councilmember Aloa Zena passed away just recently, and I understand there's some members of her family in the audience, and I want to let you know that we will be adjourning the meeting in her honor this evening. So thank you. All right, if you would call for City, for public comments please?
This is the time and place for public comments, the speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Six people have presented cards, and pursuant to Council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence, and yes, I do have six speaker cards, first is Jill Letterer, followed by Rick Lemo.
Good evening Council and City Staff, Management, my name is Rick Lemo, I live in the Newberry Park section of Thousand Oaks. First, I didn't want to let tonight go by without recognizing a celebrity on our Council. Councilmember Claudia Beldia Lepenya was our Woman of the Year last year, and I'm sure she's going to make mention of this later, but I'm going to make mention now too, she's also one of the chairs of Go Red for Women, so on Friday the 13th, the Friday the 13th before Valentine's Day, we're going to be having a lunch at the Hyatt, and from what I understand, they have blown the doors off of last year's chair, who happened to be a man, and have done a great job at that, so keep that on your calendar, but that's not what I'm here for tonight. What I'm here for tonight is something that is a lot of fun, because I am the Chair of our Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and on February 27th, we're going to be having our Fire and Ice Gala, and we like to recognize people in the community, much like we did Councilmember D. Lepenya last year, and others, and this year, we have the opportunity to recognize someone who thankfully has slipped through the cracks for many, many years. This is a person who I admire very much, I think has been a phenomenal volunteer for our city, and we get to recognize this person not only because of the great work that they've done, but also last year was our 50th anniversary of the city, and our Mayor, Mayor Andy Fox, it gives me great pleasure to recognize you as this year's Man of the Year for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. So congratulations, Andy. Oops, my yellow light is on, time to go.
I told my wife it was going to be a short agenda, we're not doing much tonight.
Well, you aren't, but we were. So congratulations very much. We're very proud to have you as our Man of the Year this year.
I'm honored.
Thank you both. Next up is Frank Millar, followed by Kathy Carlson.
Mayor, Council, this is, I'm Frank Millar, Thousand Oaks. It's been a short two weeks since our last meeting, and I was up here, but in the lobby after that meeting, I discovered that the information that we had gotten the previous September with regard to during the time that we were at the city here doing the McDonald's mediation, we learned that the city has an initiative to bring all commercial occupants of the Oakbrook Arbelette Center into compliance regarding operating hours. Since that time, we've learned that collaboration between the stores in the city and the stores, sorry that was redundant, are converging on a strategy associated and associated tactics that are satisfactory to the stores for moving forward toward some of the city's stated goals. After last week's, last two weeks' Council meeting, I asked a member of the Community Development Department if there was going to be a similar type of exercise by the city with the residents. The response was that residents always are given the opportunity to respond, and if necessary, object to development proposals. To that department's credit, a few days later, many residents received notice that the significant changes to the hours are being considered, and applications are being received so that they can be processed. What I wrote here on my speech tonight is, "Help, help, help." You guys asked us, the residents, to talk to applicants and have a dialogue and resolve issues ahead of time. These proposals involve taking 50 to 60% of the shopping center and changing the hours all at one time, and of course, the normal course of events would be a three-minute response. At the Planning Commission meeting, we're really At the planning commission meeting, we're really asking that you folks ask for, request, demand, whatever the proper terminology is, an orchestrated dialogue between the residents and the plan, Community Development and the commercial people, and that'd be in two steps. One, to address the significant list of dysfunctionalities that inadvertently have crept into code enforcement and planning that relate directly to the problems that we've been seeing in the shopping center over there. And that, once we've gotten our arms around those dysfunctions and we've resolved those issues, that we then can sit down and have these discussions with, about changing the hours with all the appropriate parties.
Thank you, Mr. Millar. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Kathy Carlson, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Carlson, 33-year resident of Thousand Oaks.
Kathy, pull the microphone down.
Yeah, I thought so. Kathy Carlson, Thousand Oaks, 33-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here to talk about the increase in crime, and I was a victim last week. I'll tell you, since 2009, I've been working away and coming back. I was in Uzbekistan, Iraq, and the Bay Area. And I come back, and my neighbors are saying there's a lot of crime on our street. Well, I now have a mobility scooter for when my arthritis gets really bad. I had it stolen, and the police department, they're doing a wonderful job. The value of it is $3,500, so it's not chump change. And it is an unusual one. There's only three in California. It looks like a, it's an electric trike. And it's royal blue and orange. And the detective is doing a great job checking Craigslist, eBay, putting out a bulletin. My concern is that I suspect it's the metal scavengers. My neighbors have been telling me, now that there are four, five, six different trucks coming up and down our street. Right across the street from me, the neighbor said she saw trucks going three times in one day. Last Saturday, I ran over to my neighbors after my trike was stolen and told them what happened. He's a carpenter, leaves his garage up a lot. He said, "You know," because I saw him changing, working on his truck in the street because our driveways are on a slope. So, he's working on the street, goes in the house, comes out, and a metal scavenger is trying to steal his auto jack, saying, "Oh, it's next to the curb." This is outrageous. He didn't get the license. But please, anybody who's hearing this, I hope that they, even if they think it's minor, if some metal has been stolen in front of their house, please report it. So, that's, also, the Acorn wrote a very good editorial, and Kyle Jory asked me to write a letter to the editor about what happened to me, and I intend to do that for the next week. But Kyle's editorial was about theft and how we're getting complacent because we're such nice people. We are not suspicious enough. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up Suzanne Duckett, followed by Nick Kidway.
My name is Suzanne Duckett, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I came tonight to honor Alois Zina. She was a city councilperson of, with extreme dignity. She was mistreated, viciously mistreated, when she was on the council. And yet, she remained a lady. She was beautiful on the inside as well as on the outside. A real lady and a real example for people on the council. She taught me how Republicans, she was a staunch Republican, and I being a 1960s Democrat, staunch Democrat, how we could get along. City politics doesn't have those barriers. I loved Alois Zina. She was a good example for me that I have never been able to live up to. Thank you, Alois Zina.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. Mr. Kidway, followed by Chuck Consel.
I begin in the name of God who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Iqbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newberry Park, the Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, inducted into it primarily by Mrs. Zina. Unfortunately, no one has been able to fill her shoes at all on the council, and I don't have, never have had a friend on the council except for the late Mr. Masri. If T.O.T.V. can show that, that is one of Zina's legacy. We were born with the Circuit City mess, and they had a small sign like that announcing it. And then we went to the big sign, and this is statewide now. We were one of the pioneers who started. But that was 1994, 1992. This is 2015. No progress has been made. In fact, we've gone backwards. There used to be at least two dozen people that would be involved in the issues. Now, maybe there's a half a person, I would say, not even. I don't want to spend that much time either because it's just so bad. T.O.T.V., if you can show, I mean, we have people like two sitting on the council that act like they are the heirs to Zina, but not really. This is the political green packet. I mean, I was completely banned from it. You know, this is the United States, there's the flag. But they still are not open. I sent, I spoke last week about finding $2,080 spent for a non-existing, now I find out, sign that took on the 101 to clean the freeway. So, I spoke about it, and I was ignored by the city manager, which is against their policy. No answer was given. So, I sent an email with the pictures, and that should have been included in today's green packet, but it is not. I mean, insert the people. I mean, who cares? I mean, so long as you get the $200,000 plus and European vacations in December, et cetera. My question is, I mean, how often is that paid? Is that a quarterly payment? Is that a yearly payment? Who authorized it? And the sign is gone because of the construction, so are we still paying $2,080? I was bullied by a council member who happens to be a police officer because I brought to the council attention that Mr. Fox, while he's recognized by the chamber, but he has been demoted a couple of times at his job, and I thought that the latest changes had brought about a demotion. And I called, and he told me to apologize to him. I mean, why should I apologize when you treat people like me who come here like dirt? Dirt, like we are vermin. And it was a factual thing. The news article was a couple of years old. But I've tried to find out from the department, and it looks like he's in the basement.
Chuck Consel, followed by Clint MacKeditch.
Hi, Chuck Kenstall. You always get my name wrong, Andy. It's Kenstall, but a lot of people get my name wrong. Thank you. I just want to, I'm here because Suzanne mentioned that Alois Zina had passed away, and I think there needs to be some kind of a special ceremony. Claudia, you knew her well. And Andy, you as well. I mean, we've all had our differences. We fought over small-town values. I think, I think our side about small-town values is lost. All you have to do is go out and see the crowded streets and all the crap that's going down now. By the way, Ms. Carlson, I want to tell you, this stuff is going on now locally. The community is, the whole community is being sort of raided. There was a beautiful sign up, historic sign up by Santa Paula where John Charles Fremont met with local people while he was here in California. That's like, what, 150 years ago? That beautiful plaque was stolen. And so, we're, our, our community is being raided in a way, and I think the police should be aware of what's going on, and they probably already are. But I think we should take precautions about these trucks that go through our community and kind of scope everything. I think it's, it's progress. It's America, the American autropia in action. But I just want to talk about Alois. You know, I just heard about her passing. She was a terrific lady. I know we've all had our differences, Andy. You're a terrific guy. But let me just say this about Alois. I hope we would have a special ceremony. But Alois was a real small, she was a politician that wasn't here for money or status or building a career or anything like that. She was here because she really loved this community. She loved the small-town ambiance and just a terrific mom. And she was a neighbor of mine and neighbor of Suzanne's, and I think she represented a whole group of people in this community that were here for the small-town values. And I think this is one of the reasons why this Thousand Oaks still has kind of a small-town atmosphere, and that's what this is all about. It's, I think it's a special place. I've lived here 45 years, and I would ask you, Andy especially, we, you know, we don't need to, you know, go into petty stuff. I know you and I kind of had a confrontation here when we were sort of doing the recall against you after you guys pulled off the recall against Alois. Those were, those were kind of interesting times. But I think we need to come together as Americans, small-town values, middle America. I think the president has said it all. We're trending into a new era, and that's unfortunate. So, let us, let us come together. It's not, not positive to, you know, all this petty bickering and everything. We need to work for a, basically, a new, a new global environment.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay.
Chuck Kenstall.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And our last speaker, Clint MacKeditch.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. Clint MacKeditch, 33-year-old resident, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks. I want to first echo the comments made by Ms. Duckett. Those are my exact feelings about Ms. Zina, who obviously recently passed away, and I just heard about it like many of you did just recently today. When I was 15, I, believe it or not, started, for some people think I'm nuts, started watching council meetings, started to take an interest in my hometown. 2012, 2014, I was a candidate for the local park board. That's all because of Alois Zina and her leadership. And she was the primary reason why 18 years later, I'm still involved and still care about meetings like this. And I didn't come here tonight to get into anything political, but I will say that for that 15-year-old kid that used to watch her on the council, she made me believe that it is okay to question City Hall. So, rest in peace, Alois. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. All right. Moving on to the consent calendar. Any items to be pulled? None to be pulled. I do have one speaker card, and that is Mr. Nick Kidway. You pass? All right. Then I'm looking for a motion to pass a consent calendar. Mr. Price.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
All right. Motion to move approval.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Next, we go on to department reports, and Mr. Finley is going to talk to us about the extension of the declaration of the local emergency measure. It's a 30-day extension, is it not?
Yes, it is. Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I'm going to give you a brief update this evening on the storm mitigation measures for the Dos Fuentos area. Before you is a map of the Dos Fuentos area. There are nine circles there which show the locations where there were significant impacts from the storm on December 14th. There's one thing I want to point out about that storm, the fact that came out later. The Ventura County Star quoted a hydrologist with the National Weather Service that stated that in a gage near Camarillo Springs, in 10-minute time, the rainfall measured 1/6 of an inch, which equates to an intensity of a 500-year storm. And in areas of Oxnard, they actually measured an intensity of up to what they would call a thousand-year storm. So, the event that occurred on December 14th, 2012, was, by all accounts, very rare. Just to give you a little background, on the January 13th meeting, the city council confirmed that there was a local emergency as declared on December 18th. You approved the NRCS damage survey report and recommended the mitigation measures that were included in that report. You conceptually approved the NRCS reimbursement agreement for up to $130,000 with a $32,000 match, and you waived the normal bidding procedures so that we could see bids for the emergency work. As a follow-up to that meeting, on January 14th, we met with the homeowners of the Dos Fuentos residents that were actually affected, and at that meeting, we answered questions and offered them right-of-entry agreements. On the 16th, the city initiated an informal bid process for the mitigation measures. On the 21st, we received two bids back from contractors. And on January 22nd, an information piece was sent out by the HOA to the residents informing them of what to do during rain events. This is a list of mitigation measures that are included within the DSR. They include trash racks, debris catchments, K-rails, and sandbags. They're laid out here for each resident. Just include this for your information. The next steps, we will execute the NRCS reimbursement agreement when we receive that agreement, and as of tonight, we have not yet received that draft agreement. We'll execute the construction contract with Burnne Pacific. Once we get that agreement for $116,738, we'll begin construction work contingent on receiving right-of-entries from each of the property owners. And once the NRS agreement is executed, we have 10 days to complete the work. Recommendations are before you in the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Questions for Mr. Finley? Councilmember Beldillapena.
Thank you. The question I have is, did we receive approval from all the residents then? Or agreement?
We have received conditional agreement from everybody. We haven't necessarily seen, received all the right-of-entries signed yet, but we've spoken with all of them. We've met with most of them, and not everybody wants all the improvements on their property, but everybody's in agreement that the improvements or the mitigation measures in the HOA property should be done, and we may need access across their property to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick one, Mr. Finley. Is it reasonable to think that these improvements or whatever you want to call them can be done in 10 days?
Yes, they have to be done in 10 days.
I know they have to be, but they can be.
They will be.
They will be done in 10 days. All right. Good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. All right. I do have one speaker card, and that is Mr. Edward Scully. Mr. Scully?
Thank you, and my name is Edward Scully. I live at 120 Caidad El Prado in Dos Fuentos. I think I'll keep this pretty short. I think I'll keep this pretty short. The word "improvements" is constantly being thrown out, and for my property, I wouldn't consider this an improvement, and I don't think any of you would either. Proposed for our property is a combination of 1,500 sandbags and up to five K-rails that are expected to be there for three years, running right through our property on our side yard. The sandbags will be four feet wide by approximately four feet tall. We are responsible to maintain them and remove them when we see fit. I don't think that's an improvement. There was nothing else that was recommended for the drain above the property that got clogged. There are still approximately 3,500 sandbags just above our property. The one thing that is not addressed is that the source of the mud is coming from city property. Comes from city property. It floods the HOA storm drain, and my family is a recipient of that, and no one is talking The city's mission statement says, "Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose." Since July of 2013, I've been trying to prevent this from happening, this mudslide from happening, and it's happened twice. We need your help. I don't think 1,500 sandbags and 8,000 pounds of K-rails are the answer. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scully. Follow-up, Mr. Finley?
Nothing to add at this time.
All right. If there are no further questions, then I'll ask for a motion to extend the declaration of local emergency. Mr. Fox?
I'll move staff recommendations one and two and adopt the attached resolution.
All right. Motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And now we go to commission reports, and from the Cultural Affairs Commission, we have the chair, Eloise Cohen, this evening to speak with us, and Barry McCombe, of course, will be here as well. Good evening, Eloise.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am Eloise Cohen. I'm the chair of the Cultural Affairs Commission's Theater Operations Committee, not the entire commission, and it's my pleasure to provide you with the commission's recommendations for resident arts organizations this evening. First, I'd like to provide some background. During the first decade of operations in our theaters, the city council designated Cabrillo Music Theater, New West Symphony, and Pacific Festival Ballet as resident performing arts organizations. The 2008 Cultural Arts Review Report recommended that the city formalize the process for designating resident arts organizations, and in 2012, the city council approved a formal resident arts organization policy which established guidelines, criteria, benefits, and an application process. Some of the requirements to become a resident arts organization are before you, such as nonprofit located in greater Cano and adhering to a minimum number of performances, current on their payment to the city, and ongoing engagement in educational and community outreach programs. There are also benefits to being a resident arts organization, such as priority booking status on the theater calendars, 35% discount off user fees and rental rates, waiver performance deposits, donor wall space, and a term of three years guaranteed. And there is an application process. Applications from organizations seeking residency are accepted through October 1st each year for the following performance season. The Cultural Affairs Commission and the Theater Operations Committee reviews these applications and conducts interviews to ensure compliance of all these organizations. Recommendations are then submitted to city council for approval prior to January 31, and that's why I'm here in front of you this evening. Four applications were received by the October 1 deadline this season. Cabrillo Music Theater, New West Symphony, and Pacific Festival Ballet are all seeking renewal of their resident arts organization status for a three-year period. A new application was also received from the Cano Valley Youth Orchestra. So just a brief overview of our current resident arts organizations that I think we're all very familiar with, but I will be happy to review them for you. Cabrillo Music Theater is led by artistic director Louis Wilkenfeld, has produced locally musical theater productions for over 30 years, presents over 40 public performances, and maintains a strong community outreach program. It's important to note that Cabrillo does have an outstanding balance, which their board has agreed to pay off no later than June 30 of 2018. New West Symphony, led by music director Marcelo Lenninger, performs in Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, and Santa Monica, presents six public performances and one educational school performance and the majority of its outreach activities in the greater Cano Valley. And finally, Pacific Festival Ballet, I think you've seen some of our lovely ballet arenas here this evening, is led by artistic director Kim Miselli. The company is proud to have presented classical ballet at the Civic Arts Plaza for the last 20 years. The Pacific Festival Ballet presents seven public performances and three educational school performances, and provides local company dancers with the opportunity to perform with world-renowned guest artists. Our fourth applicant, the Cano Valley Youth Orchestra, did not meet the requirement to present a minimum of five performances each season, although the orchestra later presented a plan to fulfill that requirement. The commission chose to send their application back to committee for further review. A few comments on the theaters fund. The commission is very aware of the city council's directive to balance the theaters' budget by June 30, 2016, so it's important to highlight for you some of the potential impact of resident arts organizations on that fund. There will be a financial impact of approximately $46,000 per year in resident arts organization user fees with our current three resident arts organizations. Adding additional resident arts organizations in the future will increase the annual user fee subsidy. And additionally, priority booking access may hinder efforts to attract headline concert artists and may also potentially impact other longstanding annual engagements in the two theaters. The Cultural Affairs Commission believes that Cabrillo Music Theater, New West Symphony, and Pacific Festival Ballet each meets the criteria and is worthy of the city's designation as resident arts organizations, and recommends that the city council extend the resident arts organization status for these three groups for an additional three-year period. Thank you. If you have any questions, mostly variable assets.
Thank you, Eloise. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Mr. McCombe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think she did a good job of covering the discussions that took place both at the committee and commission level.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you again. I do have three speaker cards, and the first speaker will be Gina Conti.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you guys. My name is Gina Conti. I've been a resident here in Westlake for 17 years. It's an honor to be here this evening to represent a performing arts company in the Cano Valley, but not just any company, specifically Pacific Festival Ballet. They are a world-class performance company, and I am proud to be a part of it, a company that represents a living canvas for creative expression and exploration on stage. My husband and I have performed in Pacific Festival Ballet's annual Nutcracker production right here at the Civic Arts, performing in the party scene for the last six years, as well as being an integral part of their annual Sugarplum Tea fundraiser in Lake Sherwood. Our daughter has trained with Pacific Festival Ballet's Training School in Agoura Hills, California Dance Theater for the past nine years, and as well has performed in many of their beautiful productions such as Cinderella, Peter Pan, and Noah's Ark. This has been pure joy for our family. In December, between shows, we greeted patrons in the Cavali lobby from across the United States. Closer to home, they came from Ventura, Los Angeles, Plus Bakersfield, San Jose, Orange County, San Diego, Mission Viejo, Idlewild, and Riverside. Pretty amazing. And I even became like a little girl during the breaks because there were a lot of celebrities and movie stars that brought their families, and they told us they specifically came to Pacific Festival Ballet's rendition of the Nutcracker, so that was really special to hear. It's wonderful. PFB's Nutcracker and Civic Arts Plaza are clearly on the map, and people notice it. Our original ballets and multimedia creations are spectacular in themselves. We have a unique collaboration between the artistic director and composer, combined with the right blend of talents and artists in our own community of Thousand Oaks. As a performer and advocate promoting Pacific Festival Ballet, along with many families that are here tonight, and this is just a drop in the bucket, what we have, the support we have, we encourage you to renew our residency status for Pacific Festival Ballet. We honor and take this very seriously. With confidence, we can all attest that PFB has upheld its responsibilities as a resident ballet company, and we are proud of our proven past, but we are more excited about the vision and ability we have to expand and grow in the future. Members of city council, thank you. Thank you for your service to our incredible community of Thousand Oaks, which I like to call Mayberry Town. We are grateful for the years you've allowed Pacific Festival Ballet to shine in this beautiful venue and truly make a difference in families' lives and in the world of the performing arts. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Gina. Next, Lori Sorensen, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and council members. My name is Lori Sorensen. I'm a 33-year member at Westlake Village, Thousand Oaks, and I'm a 25-year co-director of Pacific Festival Ballet. We were named the resident ballet company in 2000. In 1994, we presented the inaugural Nutcracker right here on our state-of-the-art Cavali stage, and just last month, celebrated our 20th anniversary season. We are extremely proud of our magical Nutcracker featuring guest artists, including principal soloists from New York City Ballet, Dance Theater of Harlem, Spain, Russia, Colombia, and Mexico, who share the stage with PFB's beautiful dancers selected by audition. I'd like to present two of our beautiful dancers, Lele Racco, 15, who was Clara this year on Saturday and the Wednesday school shows, and Jennifer Block, also 15, and she was our Clara in our Thursday school show and our Sunday performances. We are equally proud of our opulent costumes and sets and our amazing choreography, and of course, our signature snow scene, which thrills young and old as the snow falls not only on the stage but on the audience as well. Thank you to all of you who have attended PFB's performances and complimented us with your very kind words. In addition to our Nutcracker season, Pacific Festival Ballet also presents the classics, including everyone's favorite Cinderella, coming up again this May 16, as well as two world premieres right here, The Seep Princess and Noah's Ark, and our summer contemporary season of Kaleidoscope. To date, 186,000-plus patrons have come to this theater to our performances, generating over $4 million in ticket sales. In addition to our weekend performances in collaboration with the Alliance for the Arts Kids in the Arts Program, PFB has introduced thousands of children who are busting to our performances during the week from surrounding schools. The excitement on their faces and the loud applause is priceless as they experience live theater, many for the very first time. Thank you to the Theater Operations Committee, the Alliance for the Arts, the Cultural Affairs Department, and to you, our city council, for the amazing benefits you offer Pacific Festival Ballet as one of your resident companies, including our office space right here down the hall from Cabrillo, New West Symphony, and within the Alliance for the Arts suite. You have allowed us to tell our stories on stage for 20 seasons. Tonight, we are asking for your approval to extend Pacific Festival Ballet's residency status at our home theater, the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you, girls, for coming down and brightening up our meeting. And finally, we have Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, not a ballet artist and foolish enough to speak after Mrs. Conti and these beautiful girls. I do congratulate them for the fantastic job that they are doing. Of course, I support all the three organizations' request for local status, but I happened to find my memo to the council from May of last year when you were increasing fees, et cetera, and I think it's appropriate that I read the three lines. "Council, wake up. Declare victory on the original false promise that no taxpayer funds would be used to run the two theaters." This is so appropriate tonight after hearing about Eloise Cena. This is not Disneyland, sir, madam. All theaters in this country, the whole world actually, are subsidized. Cerritos has an endowment of a couple of million dollars in purse money like it was candy to run their theaters. Establish a reasonable amount to give to the theaters. $43,000 is owed by Cabrillo, and they have to struggle till 2018 to pay it off. How about the city council, I mean, $2,000 a quarter for a sign that does not exist that you are paying, how about writing that off? I mean, it is just disgusting that people have, the effort of so many volunteers is not recognized, and the priorities are skewed in favor of other things which are not as important. Just the simple thing which I had talked about before, and I will talk again, is that Ticketmaster. I mean, their fees are so high, if you try to go and buy tickets, which I have tried to do and done, it's like you are paying your property tax. You need girls like these ballet girls, older, add the ticket longer hours so that more tickets are sold and the subsidies are reduced, and everybody's happy. Once again, I support the three organizations and your effort, and I would ask that the $43,000 for Cabrillo should be written off. Some plan should come up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And I do have a written statement card from Gina Mandell, which we will enter into the record as well. Fellow council members, do we have any questions for Mr. McCombe or Ms. Cohen? All right. I would just have a comment here. I'm completely in favor of granting the extension of residency to the three groups involved this evening. We did have an ad hoc committee headed by Mr. Fox and myself to address the nagging deficit that the theaters have been facing, and I do believe we have that solved, and it should be corrected by mid-2016, but, you know, as in any deficit, it's tenuous, and we want to stay on course. And I would say at this point, going forward, until that budget's balanced, I don't feel that I would want to, I would want to hold off on any new residency requests at this point, until that budget is balanced. And I would also appreciate if staff would come back to the council sometime in the future with perhaps a short review on residency. I mean, it has been going on for 20 years right now. Talk a little bit about the benefits and the inherent benefits involved and the value that it has to City Guards Plaza. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to Ms. Bill D'Antoni.
I move the staff recommendation, one, two, and three, and what I wanted to say is, yes, And what I wanted to say is, yes, we are experiencing some difficult or challenging times in the arts currently, but I have to say that all three resident organizations are absolutely fabulous. I happen to know all three of them quite well. Seasoned subscribers to Cabrillo Music Theater, the best musical performance program that you will see anywhere in the country. Also, subscribers to the Nueva Symphony, which has a wonderful program for children to be introduced to classical music and to other music. And Pacific Festival Ballet, Lori, Kai, you do tremendous work with the ballet. My sons were taking, it's not only ballet, hip-hop as well. My sons were doing hip-hop and enjoyed it tremendously. And from speaking from personal experience, I just, my hat is off to all three of you, and I wholeheartedly will endorse renewing the resident status.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bild of Pena. With that, we have a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Motion carries for zero.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I don't believe there's anything from the redevelopment agency to report, so we're going to go to Councilmember Price, who attended the League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee meeting. Ask you to give us a report on that. Mr. Price?
Thank you very much. Yes, I was in Sacramento on January 15th to attend the policy committee meeting, and there were a number of items that were discussed there, starting with medical marijuana regulation. The League of California City Staff and the California Chiefs of Police had worked on a joint medical marijuana proposal that got traction, but because it had a $20 million cost to implement, it didn't pass. They are looking forward to once again renewing that, having some discussions with the governor, who unofficially was in opposition to it, but I think, again, we gained some traction with that. And there's also some issues with the city of Los Angeles that need to be ironed out before that can go forward. After that, we discussed a number of issues dealing with oil by rail. That is an issue in a lot of California communities, not so much in Thousand Oaks, but we were certainly in support of any legislation that would make that safer. Also, there was some additional bill, AB 22, that's proposed that would add money for training for firefighters and first responders in the event of oil disasters. Then we went on to AB 36, which deals with the federal surplus military property, the 1033 exchange program that is in the news. There is a bill to, that would require that any appropriations of surplus equipment would have to be voted on and discussed openly in council meetings. While we understand that that is, in some areas, an issue, it is not one that the committee sought to advance, and we opposed that bill as it was constituted. Then the next bill was AB 69, which would impose a requirement that every law enforcement agency, that all police officers statewide wear body cameras, and the committee was opposed to that as well, primarily because it is yet another unfunded mandate by the state, and we're looking to see whether or not there's any funding mechanism for providing those. Certainly not that we're opposed to that. So very good meeting, and there will be more to follow on that in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We'll receive that report. Appreciate you representing us. And let's go on to the council member assignments. I hope everybody's relatively happy with their assignments. Ms. Bild of Pena?
If I may make one recommendation, and that's the one that I should have, I wanted to do it in 2013 when I was mayor, but for some reason, I think I was strong-armed by our city manager then. He's not here tonight, so. Number four, Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I was only joking. Intergovernmental Relations Committee, that is a committee that hasn't met in eight years now. And I really don't see the purpose of keeping this committee at all. It can be disbanded, in my opinion, and if there is a need to somehow recall a meeting with, between the park district and the city and the school district, which the Intergovernmental Relations Committee is, then perhaps we can form an ad hoc committee then. But we're going into year eight now with this committee of not having met. I really don't think we need it.
Don't we usually give them 10 years? A decade?
No.
No. No, maybe not. What do the rest of our members think, Mr. Fox?
Meet weekly.
Meet weekly? All right.
As long as the committee's set.
Well, it's true. Some of these committees don't meet all that often, and I guess this is the one that has met the least often. What do you think, Mr. Price?
Well, might there be any comments that could be made by our Assistant City Manager?
Yes. And speaking of that, Mr. Drew Powers is here as our acting city manager this evening. What do you think, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Councilmember Bild of Pena. We're certainly comfortable from a staff perspective with whatever council decides. I think what you've seen happen over recent years is there's been collaboration between the school district and the park district in different capacities, and one example is how we deal with school issues, traffic issues around schools. We have a team that works collaboratively, and we deploy that team whenever we have issues. So we've kind of shifted our model a bit on that, and having the, you know, just speaking to why I think we've kept it on there, it's, we, having to stand up a committee can take some time occasionally, so having it there has given us that ability to call upon it should we need that. But we're certainly happy with whatever the pleasure the council is.
Yeah, I just think the committee's time has come to disband simply because it has been so long, and as you mentioned, the focus has shifted to other staff members really taking over the work that the Intergovernmental Relations Committee used to do. So my recommendation, my motion is to remove Intergovernmental Relations Committee from the city council member committee assignment list.
All right. Any discussion on that? Then the motions to approve all the committee assignments and delete the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Vote, please.
Before you do that, I just have a question on the creation of it. Was there any resolution on the creation of the standing committee? Do we know?
I have no idea. It's been so long. It was about eight years ago.
All right. How about at this point, we just leave it blank while staff looks to see if there's any type of procedure we have to go through to eliminate the standing committee, and if there's nothing that we need to do, we can go ahead and eliminate it. But just for now, let's just remove any council members from that standing committee at this point.
Okay.
Does that work?
Do you want a brief, pending review by the legal department?
Yeah. I just don't know what the resolution on the creation of it says.
Yeah, pending review by the legal department.
Okay. That works.
All right. We will amend the motion, pending review by the legal department for the deletion of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Okay.
Vote, please.
Motion carries for zero.
All right. Thank you. And now, we do have our acting city manager, Mr. Drew Powers, here, and I was remiss in not allowing him to speak to public comments, so he can do that now, as well as any announcements or follow-up items that he would like to bring to us. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. I just touched on a couple of the items that came out of public comments this evening. We heard from a resident that was having an issue with theft. Have confirmed with the police department that they are in regular contact with that resident and all residents in the area that have experienced such increase in residential burglaries and thefts. We also heard this evening on issues regarding the Oakbrook Shopping Center. I just want to remind council that there is an active process underway. That item will come through to the planning commission, and we are working carefully with the various shopping center owners in that area to address all issues regarding opening, closing hours, and other sorts of activities within the center. Coming up at our next meeting, which will be on the 10th of February, we will have two special presentations. It'll be Read Across America Day, and we'll be doing accommodation for the T.O. Titans, Pacific Youth Football League, the Pee-wee Super Bowl champions. Always great to have the young guys with their helmets on in the audience. Under Department Reports, we'll have a request to allow concurrent processing of entitlement applications with a zone change for just about five acres of land on East Rolling Oaks Drive for the Oakmont Senior Living and Child Development Incorporated. We'll have our 2064 Visioning wrap-up, our final report on our visioning process and the outcome of that. And we also are now tentatively scheduled to have an item on auto mall public improvements. So that is, those are the major items scheduled for the 10th. I also wanted to take a moment to mention that the Go Red for Women lunch will be held on the 13th of February, and they still, in talking with Councilmember Bild of Pena, there still are some seats available, and the public can get more information on that at goradvc.ahaevents.org. Again, goradvc.ahaevents.org. That's AHA as in American Heart Association. And the final item I had is our deputy public works director mentioned a number of upcoming closures on the 10123 and some of the off-and-on ramps. That can be a lot to absorb in listening to that verbally. We encourage residents to visit our website. We have a special site set up for it. It's tooaks.org/10123. We have a map on there. It's interactive. It's a little easier to comprehend and really get a sense as to what's going to be closed when. So that's all I have this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Price?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if you could allow the police chief to comment on the theft situation.
Certainly. Mayor Hagel?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate what Andrew Powers said. As we see recyclers coming through the communities, it's very important for citizens to contact us when they see that type of aggressive behavior. Recycling itself is not a crime. It is a, you know, a process going on, but you have to have proper permits. You have to have a business license. You're regulated, and constantly, we will get citizens who give us great tips when we see these type of things. So as recyclers get aggressive, they come through neighborhoods, start going through yards, we do recover stolen property in these type of situations. And so I really want to encourage and expand on what Assistant City Manager said, that anytime you see a suspicious vehicle in a neighborhood, and call us. If you call, we'll come. And that's really important, and we can stop thefts like her tricycle, her electric trike there that we had. So I really appreciate it, and I'm just asking the communities, you know, assistance, trying to keep this down to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Congratulations to Mr. Fox on being named the Greater Caneo Valley Chamberman of the Year, and we also have the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber Woman of the Year to my right. So we have quite a commendable performance by our council members. This evening, I'm going to ask Tracy Noonan to do our close session announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two close session matters tonight. The first one is conference with real property negotiators, 590 North Caneo School Road. City negotiators are Cliff Finley, Deputy Public Works Director, and Flecia Lieberman, Assistant City Attorney. The negotiating party is Robert Friedman, and under negotiation is price and terms of purchase pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. And the second matter is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city-designated representatives include the city manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, and Deputy City Manager, HR Director, and labor parties include TOSIA, SMA, Toma, and all executive managers. It's not likely I'll have anything to report following these close sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. This evening, we're going to adjourn our meeting in memory of Eloiseina, former city council member and mayor, who passed away on January 23rd with her family by her side. Eloise served two terms on the city council from 1990 to 1998, and she was the mayor from 1993 to 1994. Eloise will be remembered for her commitment to open space and fiscal responsibility, to name just a few. Eloise fought for the preservation of our region's open space and was instrumental in protecting Jordan Ranch and Amundson Ranch, which is now enjoyed by hundreds of thousands of visitors each year. As mayor, she initiated the Crime Prevention Task Force, encouraging the city to become proactive against gangs. She also started the Business Roundtable, which continues to this day. She was a conservative, yet compassionate, and she was a role model for many women, as you heard in the audience this evening. In 2003, Eloise moved back to her home state of Alabama, where she continued with her passion for politics and the love for our country. Eloise leaves behind her husband Jim, her son Derek, her daughter Kristen, her daughter-in-law Michelle, and granddaughter Sagan. Eloise will be missed by both her immediate family and her city family and her many friends. I believe Councilmember Bild of Pena would like to add to that?
Well, I just wanted to say that I did speak with Jim, her husband, and he wanted to let everyone in Thousand Oaks know that he and Eloise truly loved Thousand Oaks in the 26 years that they've lived here, and were very proud of the contributions that she has provided to the environment and the citizens in general, including starting the Business Roundtable and the Mayor's Roundtable, just one of the few things she started. She was a tremendous force in the city, and nonetheless, yes, she was, we heard, a staunch Republican, but boy, she certainly had a big heart for the environment, and I just wanted to convey those sentiments, her family's sentiments, to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Bild of Pena. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for tuning in this evening, and we're going to adjourn our meeting to February 10th. Good evening.